It's to pass the draft, that be an issue, we don't need to get it official.
Yeah, if you want one, I'll bring one next time.
Alright, well, excuse me, to the city council and urban rule agency, let's call it orders, a declaration of a forum of any excuse, councilor Meyer and councilor Brown tonight. Please join me in the black cell.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your people, which stands like nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, everyone, excuse me, Mr. Smith, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Done.
Okay, start with first, uh. You're like Jake May, but you did my first time. Since who is your doctor, are you going in for Jake May?
I am here for Jake.
Alright, welcome, Mr. Usher.
Yeah, this is my first opportunity to fill in for Jake in the new building. It is beautiful, it's my first opportunity, not to be in the building, but to be in this room, it's fantastic, but. Yes, I do get the opportunity to fill in for Jake May, and for those of you that I don't know, my name is Larry Usher, I'm the district athletic director. And director of transportation, everything else that needs to get done sometimes, so I do get an opportunity for Jake. Normally, when I do this, get lots of questions about athletics, completely understand that, and I'm good with that, but I will start with a few updates from the district level, student enrollment. For some reason, this year, our student enrollment is declining from beginning of the year, we're down about 200 students since August. So our current student enrollment is 5,637 students, but we are up over the three previous years. Following COVID, during COVID, things are pretty stagnant as far as enrollment is concerned, but it is up significantly now, which that's a welcome sight for our schools and our community as well, obviously. Something that the district is doing new this year for administrators and teachers is the district's offering study table sessions, don't we all remember those? And so every week, the district office and district administrators are offering study table sessions for district employees that are taking continuing ed, they're pursuing their master's degree. Or pursuing their first bachelor's degree to become a licensed teacher, so we're offering those, giving the opportunity for some of those up and coming teachers or current teachers that are pursuing a new degree or further education. To come and get some assistance at the district office. Last week, we held the high school winner welcome, I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to be a part of that, it was very interesting this year. This year, we did a little bit different, winner welcome was for incoming freshmen, so we invited all of the sandstone and armen eighth graders to the high school. It was a great event, those students at their own buildings had an opportunity to take an aptitude test, I don't know if we all remember the old ASVAB we took in high school. This is very similar, it's called U-Signs, it's an aptitude test for students in high school, not after high school aptitude. It was the U-Signs test, it is sponsored by the Oregon Department of Education. So our students had an opportunity to take this aptitude test, then when they show up to the high school. Based on the results of the aptitude test, had an opportunity to go visit different departments in the building, mainly focused on STEM and CTE, a lot of our CTE programs. The aptitude test allowed parents to get an opportunity to see, based on whatever the results were, what classes these students might be interested in high school. Whether it be any of the act, science, engineering, construction technology, or any of the other classes. The focusing on a lot of the CTE classes, excuse me, in the high school they might be interested in, so it was. It was a great opportunity, a great event, it was very, very well attended, it was a great way to get some of our parents in the building, get an opportunity to see some of the classes that are available for our students, based on their aptitudes. A little about athletics, it's been pretty busy, as many of you are aware, we are members of the WIAA across the river. And classification update, so our classification cycle in the state of Washington is every four years. I keep getting questions by people in the community, when are they going to kick us out, when are they no longer going to want us in the WIA, that's not going to happen, our kids are still going to participate in the WIA, that is not going to change. We did reclassify for starting next year, so the conference that we participate in is a 3A, 4A, and hybrid conference. We are a 3A school, there's no classification changes to our league next year, so we were. We were on the fence about whether or not we were going to have to move up to 4A, and it was really an interesting situation, the fact that. Classification is not only based on your student enrollment, but it is also based on your direct certification count, or what we always like to call your free reduced lunch numbers, right? So they're going to base this on your student count, but also your free reduced lunch numbers, well. Now, the federal government counts free reduced lunch numbers based on your direct certification, so those students you have in your school. When their families go and they seek services from your community, from DHS, whether it be food stamps or any other services. The students that are in that family are then reported back to the school district, they're receiving these services, so now those students count as our direct certification numbers. So no longer do kids have to go in and fill out the form that we always did, because we knew a lot of families weren't going to fill that form out, a lot of families in our community don't want to fill that form out, which is completely understandable. But they do want to go out and get insurance for their kids and go out and get involved in food programs that are going to help their families. The difference for us was, the state of Oregon didn't, does not, until this year in public schools, does not, does not account for Medicaid. In the direct certification numbers, and so our direct certification number, meaning our demographics of the Hermson School District, our socioeconomic level, was actually just below Richland High School. Which I think we all know that that isn't where we should be, and so we had to do a lot of digging, it was a lot of hours of on the phone with the Oregon Department of Education, the state of Oregon. Till we found out that the state of Oregon is one of, I believe they said, only 17 states in the US that doesn't count Medicaid, so we had to go in and poll all of our students. Out of our high school that do receive Medicaid and count them into our direct certification, we got to stay down, it's over 3A, so our numbers stayed down, our classification numbers won't change. So we're still continuing in the same league, for the next four years, we'll be a 3A high school. There is, uh, we just got our numbers back for student participation last year, so for last school year, we had in athletics, we had 577 students in Hermson High School participating in athletics. Some sort of athletic program in the high school, this doesn't count clubs, it doesn't account for any other organizations, such as FFA, FCCLA, and FBLA, these are just athletics. About a third of our entire student body participated in athletics, those 577 students actually filled 829 uniforms last year. Which we're proud to say is up about 30% from where we were before COVID, so not only did our kids come out of that strong, and our families getting kids involved. But we actually increased our participation by almost 30% after COVID, which is fantastic. A couple of things we had going on in the high school as well, I don't know if many of you heard, there was some articles in the newspaper, we started an officials class this year, which has been very, very popular, exciting for our students, I know. The officials association for basketball and football, at least this year, they're very, very excited, we had, this year, for example, during football season. We had to have, in our league, along with leagues all around the state, have all our Friday night football games thrown into a hat and have days drawn out of the hat, I mean, literally drawn out of the hat. To decide who has to play on a Saturday or Thursday, and you're getting rid of that Friday night lights atmosphere in football, that's because there's not enough officials to officiate enough high school football games that are offered. And so many of them have to get moved to Thursdays and Saturdays, and we've been concerned about this for years, and I had an opportunity to. Go to the National Athletic Directors Conference last winter and have a school from the Midwest speak about an official class, they have, I found one in Washington that's doing it as well, and so. We wanted to kind of model that, and we decided that if we're going to complain about the problem that we have, we might want to be part of the solution, so we offered a class this year. We're happy to be had, I believe nine students that actually joined the officials association, whether it was the one down here in Oregon or across the river in the Tri-Cities. And all of those students officiated either basketball or football games at the high school level this year, or both, many of them are continuing to do that. They're currently officiating usually lower level JV and freshman basketball games, made it the same in football in the fall, so we had. High school juniors and seniors that were officiating high school football and basketball games this year, which is pretty exciting to see, and many of them are going to continue. To be a part of those programs for years to come, so hopefully, getting some younger kids involved in officials and help sustain what is quickly becoming a dying job for a lot of people, so. We're excited that we're going to have the opportunity to replenish that in a little bit. Amendment update, this is one that strikes up a lot of conversations when I have with people about what's going on in athletics right now. The state of Washington, along with a lot of other states in the US, they're facing a bit of a crisis when it comes to students that transfer from school to school. I hate to say that sometimes it's a crisis of entitlement, which we see from time to time, but students that, you can't just, you have to live in the community or participate in athletics at that school, and sometimes. People don't like those rules, right, you want to be able to participate in athletics at whatever school you want to, whether you live there or not, obviously not an issue in our community. But it is an issue just across the river in the Tri-Cities, if I go to Richland High School, I have to, if I live in the Richland boundaries, I have to participate in the Richland boundaries, I can't go to another school. Well, unfortunately, state associations, including the WIAA, are being faced with multiple lawsuits from families who. Are basically arguing that my son or daughter should have the opportunity to play wherever they want. With that being said, lawmakers are pushing across several states in order to have states change their association rules, so. Many of us who are sports fans in here understand what the NCAA portal is, whether you see about a Dr. Pepper commercial during the Super Bowl, or you fully understand what that is. High school athletics is soon going to be there, where kids are going to get an opportunity, maybe through some small restrictions, to participate in athletics in any school they want to. If it doesn't happen, basically, it's going to be a free for all for everybody, so it's going to be interesting over the next two to three years, how state associations navigate this. I'm currently working to get myself on the amendment committee through the WIAA to be able to work. With the groups on what this looks like, because it is a whole different landscape for us, that is across the state borders, when they're going to be taking a look at possibly lawmakers in the state of Washington taking control of this, so. This is something that's going to be changing the landscape of high school athletics slightly, at least for the people that work in it every day, and for some of you that have kids that are going to be coming through high school, it's going to change things a little bit, and so. It's not something we'd love to see, but unfortunately, I think it's the future of high school athletics for sure. Last couple items, we're excited that just this last weekend, we just finished our fourth of the four AAU tournaments in the community. This year, we did add one club volleyball tournament, and we're looking to add multiple more, so. Just like when we start getting those lacrosse and soccer tournaments going up on the Hero Fields, along with the AAU basketball and the club volleyball, you know, my hope is. That in the near future, that Hermson ends up being the hub of athletics for youth sports all around the Northwest, I know that. People that come and visit for AAU basketball, I think they feel that way already, that this last weekend, we had 104 teams, two weeks before that, we had 114 teams. You probably see that our community population grows by about 4,000 to 5,000 people on AAU weekend, which is exciting to see, and it's good for our community, so. We're hoping that along with lacrosse, soccer, club volleyball, and some others, that we're going to see that our community is going to be a hub for youth sports here in the future, so. But all I got, questions for me?
I just want to comment that I was there.
No, Mr. Usher doesn't get to write. Mr. Usher's first time tonight, so. Mr. McCarthy, please go.
I think it was last week, I attended the state cheer send-off, and I just want to say it was great to see a lot of the support from the students there, and also in particular, we were there. Because of the dance cheer for Riley as well, and that was great, and glad we could share cut things as well, but that was really nice to see that, and the enthusiasm beyond it, so I hope everybody was.
Yeah, I appreciate that, it was fun, it was my first opportunity to go watch state cheer last Friday at Battleground, it was. 10 hours of travel for 2 minutes and 34 seconds of a performance, but our girls did phenomenal, they finished third in one of their performances at state level, which we're really excited about. Couple of state championships, don't they? Dance, yeah, cheer, but competitive cheer is new for us, last year, we just started competitive cheer for the first time, so no longer are cheerleaders just sideline cheer. They are now a competitive activity at the high school, so they go on and compete at the state level, they compete in many competitions, they have a district competition as well. Their district was at Moses Lake a few weeks ago, and then last week, they had an opportunity to go compete for the state championships at Battleground, High School, and Vancouver. Public sports opportunities are given. We have counting activities, because dance and cheer are technically classified as an activity, because they don't fall under all the same rules. As the other sports, but not counting club sports, so we have 22 WIAA sports currently, you count club sports, I think we're around 26 or 27.
You mentioned something earlier, about 577 students in athletics, any idea how many participate across all the options or activities are there?
Like our organizations, state organizations, I don't, I don't know, it's going to be a significant number more, simply because. Some of our state organizations, such as FFA, FBLA, FCCLA, as I mentioned before, and a lot of our other clubs, they, they're very time consuming, so a lot of times. We see if a student is going to excel like our students do in many of those organizations, they may not have the opportunity to be an athlete or to be a multi-sport athlete, so. It's not common that a large number of those 577 are going to be in those organizations as well. Just when you have band choir and, I mean, you talk a show on, it's not a band choir, we just, we just finished our first weekend performance of the Spring Musical, Seven Rides and Seven Brothers, which was fantastic. So when you start adding all of those, it gets to where our numbers are increasing significantly, and one of the reasons we have a huge increase in numbers as well. Is some of our programs that pull in student athletes that don't traditionally participate in athletics that you and I have seen over the years, such as slow pitch girls softball. That brings a lot of girls athletes that don't participate in any other sport and never have, girls wrestling. We'll be sending eight wrestlers to state this weekend, nine counting an alternate, and a lot of those girls have never participated in any athletics until they get to girls wrestling, and girls bowling is the same, a lot of them. Have never participated in any athletics at all, until they get to our basic program, participate in bowling, because those students traditionally haven't done those things, so. That just increases our numbers, because we're not just pulling the same kids.
It's good to give kids some engagement outside the classroom, so they have a reason, but sometimes it goes to war. Got to get the hook set, so they stay in the classroom, show up every day. I love the idea that the school district is working and trying to encourage officials. I don't know if you've read the John Canzano, he's one of my favorite sports writers, but recently wrote on this issue specifically. They didn't open that up to parents, so.
That's official sign all the time, don't they? One thing that was interesting, it was the end of football season, officials around the United States, when you, when you. Sign up and pay your dues to be a member of the officials association, they get a subscription to referee magazine as a nationwide magazine, well, there was an article about our students in referee magazine, which is a nationwide publication, we're pretty excited about.
Any other questions?
You mentioned Seven Rides, just for Seven Brothers, I'm just curious, do you know how much longer that will be? Through next weekend, yeah, next weekend will be the final performances, last year, they did a Super Bowl weekend as well, and actually tried to have a performance on Super Bowl Sunday, which. I don't think was terribly well attended, but this year, they didn't do a Sunday matinee, they did a Saturday matinee and a Saturday evening show, and then they'll have shows again next weekend, thank you.
Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
Friday, Saturday, this week, listed, go down to the opportunity, yes, councilor Peterson.
So earlier you mentioned that we're down about 200 students, is that any particular, grade wise, or is that across the board?
That's just across the board, just from August until now, our enrollment at the beginning of the school year in August was about 200 students higher, and that's fairly typical as we get through the winter, a lot of our. A lot of our migrant students might leave the community and end up coming back in the springtime at some point, and we are continuing to get some of those students back now. Others would be just students that, you know, very few that drop out of the high school level, but a lot that withdraw and transfer elsewhere. And those numbers tend to balance out, but they're about 200 below what they were in August.
Any update on pickleball in terms of official districts, would?
No, we haven't heard anything about pickleball, but what is interesting though is, so. As I mentioned about the amendment process, the amendment process in the state organization, through the WIAA takes place every year. When someone wants to add a rule, change a rule, any league in the state association or any school can sponsor an amendment. And one of the amendments is to add two new sports, that would be girls flag football, which is interesting. It's already very, very popular on the west side of the state, the NFL teams from all around the league are sponsoring that, including the Seattle Seahawks are sponsoring. The opportunity and funding, getting girls involved in flag football, the tough part is, is when are you going to do it? Right, if, in a perfect world, we would add girls flag football, and again, it would do what softball, bowling, and some other sports does, is it would pull in some female athletes that don't normally participate in any other sport. The reality is, it would just, it would just pull athletes from other sports, which we don't want to see happen, so as a league, we have to make the decision to add that, and we're looking at the possibility of doing that, the other issue is, when do we do it? If you do it in the fall, you have football and girls soccer already in the stadium, if you do it in the springtime, you have boys soccer and track and field and lacrosse already in the stadium, so it's going to be difficult to find time to do that. The other one that is being petitioned to add this year as an amendment is badminton before pickleball, so I don't get that for how exciting and how. How popular pickleball is right now, and when the word badminton came up, I didn't understand it at all, but apparently, there are schools in western Oregon and western Washington that's very, very popular, they have dozens of kids that want to go badminton.
My cousin, or niece, I'm sorry, my niece is a two-time state Arizona badminton champion.
So not at a family reunion, it was just the actual school's.
Is the flag football going to be a part of all this?
I don't know.
This is for athletes, I don't think.
It might be, I know, well, maybe seven on seven football, I don't know if it's full flag football or not, but. I'm afraid of looking at the day coming someday, the tackle football is going to be taken away at the high school level eventually, but I hope not.
Any other questions? Well, Mr. Usher did a pretty good job for your first time.
Hey, no, my first time, it's been a couple of years.
First time in the new, yeah, first time in the new county, well, thank you for coming tonight, thank you guys, I appreciate it, thank you for all you do, thank you for your time. Alright, our second presentation tonight, I see you sitting out there, Roger Condi with Ubitac County Housing Authority, I'm going to give you some updates, welcome Roger.
Thank you. I'm Roger Condi, I'm the executive director of the Ubitac County Housing Authority, I sent you guys a big packet, so I won't go over the packet. But all the time you guys can.
The right shit, yeah.
Some highlights of what we're doing, so. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, in the state of Oregon, on a given night, there are about 1,400 homeless veterans out there. Will nowhere sleep, homeless there, where we're wanting to see if we can help them out, we don't have the exact number here at the firm, and this area, because there's not much services for the veterans in this area. So we are working on putting together a 17-unit apartment complex over here on 588 Newport. And it will be primarily for homeless vets. We hope to. We just were awarded funding by OHCS, our funding is a home art, which is primarily also for homelessness. So our goal is to see if we can first aid to those that are homeless vets, see if we can get those rooms filled, and then the next would be to. Go out to homeless as well, see if there's any more needs for those, that type of housing, the beautiful part about this is that 17 units, like I said, it's also going to have. A community room, laundry room, and so forth inside of it, we're hoping with our community partners that they'll be able to provide background services for the vets and for those that are needing services. They are single bedroom units, it is inside, so the doors to the units are all interior, and we are planning on having a lock system on it. So they would normally be able to get in and out on their own without having other distractions. Our big hope is working with DMAC, Blue Mountain Action Council, they are in charge of the SSBF Fund, which is the support service of veteran family fund. And with them, they'll be able to help us get services and reach out to those of the veterans there. We, again, received, like I said, 7.3 million from OHCS, from that home art funds, and then on the other side, we received another $850,000 from the FHLD of the win. And for a way of believing in our numbers, showed that we're, our projects should be fully funded, we shouldn't have any debt into this program, which is good, which means that we're able to provide that like a federal service without having to worry about the cost of the facility itself. We're, I don't have exact dates of when we're paving the ground, we're planning on getting started, as you can see on your pages in here, I did give you. A map or a layout of what the building will look like, our hopes, so if you go down Sixth. Street, that will be one of our entrance ways into that, you'll see that there's an office. The opening, the entry and office space there for any of the different programs that are there, we've already created MOUs with CCS, with. CAPCO and also with DMAC and other veteran programs in the area. These are actual one bedroom apartments, so it's not studio, they actually have doors to their bedrooms, doors to bathrooms, they'll have their own kitchenette and so forth. We are hoping, but I won't announce it as yet, but we're hoping that we'll get donations for the appliances that go into the house, so that those will be provided. Other than that, we're really just excited about the program as a whole, what I've received is information from BMAC is that they've often times have come out. I don't know about, I don't know if everyone knows what BMAC is, again, like I told you, that's the Blue Mountain Action Council, and they actually sent an employee out to do. Anyways, they go out and looking for, they go into the homeless camps, they go to different places to look for those that are homeless vets. And they actually are in charge, like I said, that SSBF Fund, which is a lot of funding that's out there for veterans. Especially those that are homeless, and they can actually contribute to a lot of their successes, and given them a lot of resources. So we're excited to have them as well, CCS and so forth, they're inside the building, we'll have a community room and other things set up so that they can do groups if they need to group work. They can do any type of counseling they need to be there and so forth, so the clients or the tenants don't have to leave or go far in order to get to the resources that they need. Also with this location, we're excited, it's a good spot for us, perhaps that is there next to the park. So that they have that option to be there, it's right here next to Main Street, it's not far from Safeway and so forth, so. We feel like it's a good location for them as well, to take care of this need. I just want to share with you guys for a moment, we don't really have that number, they just hit count, we'll see if there is a better number for us about. How many homeless vets we have in this area, but on take, on general, there's 300, around 300 homeless people in this Ubitac County area. And the definition of what, or what they need and what they seek for assistance, we're seeing that the state is struggling hard to give that assistance, we have two homeless shelters. Right near each other, one in Pendleton and one parent, in Hermson, or the sleep center or stepping stones, and Yaco has their current key spot down there at the promised, promised end. When I was over working at, or volunteering over stepping stones, there was a gentleman there who. Is homeless, and we were talking to him on Christmas Day, and he's talking about how his kids, he turned them away, and he's not able to go back to their house, he's on his own. And he's homeless, and he's a veteran, and it's, and it's like at the time, I just had to think, well, I got a. And it's, and it's like at the time, I just had to think, well, I got a program, it's homeless there for you. Um, but the truth is, B Mac has stated, they don't come down here in Hermiston at all, because when they deal with veterans in this area. They all wanna stay here in Hermiston, they all wanna stay local, and there's nothing for them. You keep sending them off to Portland or off to some other part of the state. And there's just nothing here, so we're hoping to be an answer to that. We're hoping to bring this in store here, but. We have this property here, um we've had it a little bit. We wanted to build this back in two thousand seventeen, the numbers just didn't come together, but uh. We have it now, we have the findings, so we're pretty excited to be a part of this.
Awesome. Do you mind answering any questions?
Sure, well, I don't mind looking at you while you're asking.
Roger is also the president of Stepping Stones Alliance.
Chair.
Chair, the chair now, just newly elected, uh so he also serves on that. Board in that capacity as well, helping uh with the app project. Amazing program, super excited for uh our veterans, you know, I think. Fortunately, we have done a great job of taking care of our veterans, so having this facility for communities. Welcome to the death of needed. This is subsidized rented facility though, right? If some, if somebody comes to you that maybe don't, they have to be a certain income. Level and state is also providing resources to help fund it or.
So the state is providing the resources to build the facility, but it's because of the housing authority um and vouchers that we're able to get it. So. Just so I give some more uh education to, there's actually vouchers that the, for the B A all have batches, and that's um. Housing Authority, or um, sorry, the Hyphen and Veterans Shelter homelessness. Anyways, they give us sixteen vouchers in this area to help those that are homeless veterans, and they have to meet specific qualifications. Those qualifications is one. That will protect the homeless, and then two, they have to agree to meet with the veterans, one, the B A once a month. And even that is hard for the B A to get down here. Our closest facility is um is in Wall of All. So what the housing authority has done, what I've done, is I've put together uh. An application to H U D and ask that we turn our seventy of our three hundred and fifty-one vouchers. That we have, and I can give more definition if you have questions about these. Uh, vouchers into what's called project-based vouchers. So currently, our tenants are able to come in and apply. Or are into the housing authority for section eight. And they can get a voucher, the voucher they can take to an apartment complex and type a landlord and say, hey, I would like to. Uh, rent from you and kind of have a voucher and then make more compromise out. Uh, on rent, and then we will subsidize a portion of their rent. Same as with project-based voucher, except for the project-based voucher stays with the project. So we're gonna move fifteen of our vouchers onto this, we're hoping to move fifteen, not fifteen vouchers. Onto this project out of the seventeen homes, so that will make it so that they're subsidized. So if they have no income. They would still be able to get in, and then we can provide with them. The resource that they need, and they can grow their income, and as they do, then they'll start paying out a portion of their own rent until. They get so far, if they get to a point where they're out of their over income. Uh, that's why we're leaving two units available. One of the reasons we're leaving two units without having a standard on it. So if necessary, they can move into one of those units, or we can shuffle the P V P voucher to the fifth unit. Allowing them time to be able to. Get their feet on under them, making sure that they're stable, and then get in their own place, moving out, and hopefully open a spot for them.
So I think the goal, right, would be that these would be. Potentially transitional, because.
Well, I use the word transitional, but the hope is with any program with the housing authorities that everybody will try to. Uh, get themselves uh sustained and then move, and able to move on about.
Amazing project. Uh, any other questions? Yes.
Of course, I'd like to congratulate you on being uh in the finance to do this. And um it's like it's gonna be an awesome program. I would like to know, I see it's gonna be two, two stories, there's been on the elevator, put in there, and maybe a life uh. Harvest with all of them that way.
That's a great question. So um we are not putting an elevator into it, it would, um it's possible that would be great. Uh, all the units on the bottom are intending for two of the units. Sorry, two or four of the units be uh accessible. And then the units that are on the bottom four will have the ability to transition easily into a P A if necessary.
Will um some of the veterans that may have disabilities and uh their income's stable, will they be able to stay there on a like permanent basis or? And will give that?
It it would be considered permanent stable, stable, stable.
Thank you.
Roger, thanks for coming tonight. Tell us about this amazing story, uh primarily addressing some of that time veteran housing here in our community. So it's a another excellent resource for those folks that maybe uh haven't. Um, been able to find housing regionally and want to post the services and personal loss service available for them, and so it's a great fit, so thank you for your helpful comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the first opportunity for citizen input on on agenda items. So if there are folks that are here this evening that would like to speak to the council. That uh aren't associated with the current agenda, please come up to the microphone up front to introduce yourself, uh leave your address, direct your comments to me.
Everyone, uh here's Nick Riddling, one zero three Southwest Hall Court. Today, I'm here to comment and express my disappointment that the vacancy review board decided not to conduct any interviews for the. Applicants that applied to the budget committee. Uh, given the large number of budget issues that have been presented over the last year. Last couple of weeks, uh combined with everyone on the council's expressed concern and. Most cases, uh vertical commitments to hold accountability to the budget. I feel like it would have made sense, there'd been a reasonable step to uphold that commitment to at least conduct interviews for the applicants. On that position. I can't speak for others, but I can tell you that they weren't held to this one. Um, since I'm not a councilman or a board or committee or commission member, I don't get a say in this process. However, I still just familiarize myself with how these things work, have a couple of questions, and I hope that. I may be able to get to some answers. Uh, my first primary question is whether or not the vacancy review board operates in official capacity similar to the library. The advisory board or any of the other council or uh councils. The other committees that have been created by the Hermiston Council the last years. Um, if that board does operate in official advisatory capacity. I'm curious why it has not been officially created under chapter thirty-two of the Hermiston Code. Which every other committee board has been. From the outside looking into this process, it appears that two council members, which are unlisted in the mayor. Are the only members of the vacancy report. And because of that, they're essentially the sole side, or it's not, it gets pointed to every advisory position for this council. Uh, to me, that seems, that approach seems like a lot non-transparent process. That could easily be approved by actually establishing it as an official board, uh similar to the reports. President listed. Uh, I'm still very interested in helping improve the budgeting process as much as I can, and to help. Hermiston get out of these budgeting issues in this responsible way. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
And I was saying, I was in fact, I mean. Uh, Nick, obviously, I've reviewed the things I was planning on talking about, but I am also here to show my support in the fact that I. Find it very difficult to understand this process. Of hiring for the order, not hiring, but selecting members from the committee. I mean, I know there's people sitting right down the council that have no idea that maybe it's gonna be forty plus. Then you know who the members of that work. And those people are the ones selecting who's gonna be on the budget committee. Be perfectly honest, that's, that's an example. I want best representation of how my money is gonna be spent in this community. And that doesn't happen unless we actually, people actually have a vote on this. If one or two people are deciding not to actually put out, not actually conducting any interviews. How do we know the best person is selected for the job? Every one of us, all of you, me, everyone that's sitting in here, every member of Hermiston, to want the best person for the job. The absolute best person. And I don't care how long you've been involved in the community or what, you should want the best person for the job. I'm sorry, Mr. Nick Riddling back here has a ton of experience with numbers. He's the only person that came up here and caught the errors in the, in the last recent budget that's opposed. Sat down and wanted to talk about the budget, come up with solutions for the budget. And he's an act of position on the budget committee. Like, you have people that are wanting to help solve problems here, and how do, how do we track spending our money in this community? And it's a night. I'm sorry, but that does not look good. I want the best people on the committees, so representing us, the citizens of Hermiston, and you guys should work that too. And I hate to come here and be disgruntled about this, but it really doesn't look good, it doesn't settle well with me. You guys should be representing the people, and that means selecting the best people for the committee. The only way to do that is actually having more than one or two people on the. Vacancy Review Board, which council members don't even know what that is. Like, that, that process is an obvious number. So I urge you to please consider a different process for this, number one. Number two, make sure that you actually are selecting the best candidates for the job. Interview them, talk to them. Looking at someone's resume, you can tell you right now, I'm not conducting business, not hiring anybody, it's not having them come in, look me in the face to face. Because you can have the best resume out there. And have all these qualifications, but not actually the best person for the job. They all know that. And so, meet with people, talk to them, figure out who the best person actually is. So that Hermiston is getting the best representation possible, and our money is being spent in an appropriate ways.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. There's items A through J. Can you pull any of those? Did you wanna do any pulling? I don't know, yeah. Counselor, did you need to pull?
Yes, I would like to see E four.
Which one?
E.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, I E. Uh, any public comment on consent agenda items A through J except for E? Say none. Can I get a motion to pass consent agenda items A through J? So I see. That moved by Counselor Primmer, second by Counselor Linton, that we approve the consent agenda items A through J except for E. Local, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Out of number E, Counselor.
Uh, I would like to know who is Mr. David Shear. Is he here tonight? He's here, sorry.
No, he's not here.
Oh, that's, thanks, sorry. Okay, well, I have some questions that um of the people that were on the committee to select him, since there wasn't an interview. Maybe there's something I says he had, what his experience was with the finance question.
You, you're not aware of his name, Brookshere? He was your previous city manager for twenty-five years.
Okay, he was the city manager?
Yes. Just, he was the same kind of people.
Oh, I have.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
Counselor, comment on that. Um, all applications that come before the vacancy review board have a section for relevant experience. So every candidate for every committee has a spot to do that, and uh we review that in every circumstance before we make a recommendation. Any other questions? Um, can I get a motion to approve I E? Oh, I'm sorry, let's open up. Can I get a motion to approve I E?
Second.
That moved by Counselor Burrow, second by Counselor McCarthy, that we approve the recommendation position for the budget committee to term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-two six to Ed Brookshere. Oh, oh, yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution one three oh seven. And Mr. Schuss.
Yes, yes. All right, didn't sound good here. Okay, so the. Umatilla County approached the city um about establishing a county road district in a way that would allow them to access additional. Federal funds. So in the formula for uh secure our schools funding. And um, and then the funding that replaces timber. Uh, some of the timber taxes that were in the past. There's a cancellation of some of the funds. If you, if you choose one, then you lose some of the other. If you choose the other, you lose some of the first. And so, but some other counties in the state have established this road district, and the, and they've changed the law that allows. That money to go to the road district. And then the road district can pay the county to fix or use it on uh county roads, so increasing essentially their funding. But to do that, they need the um. Ascend, the ascent of all of the cities involved, because all of the roads in the county. Have to be in the road district, even though the funding can only be used on county roads. So the county estimates that this will increase their funding for roads to in approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year. And so, um based on trying to get more resources into the county, um I would recommend that the council approve this uh resolution that's before you. And be happy to answer any questions.
Pastor. Yeah, this the, this, this will not cost us anything, it will not affect, basically affect us in any way.
That's correct. We, we don't get money from these funding sources at all, and so it would only be an increase in the overall amount coming. We wouldn't lose them, right?
It doesn't change ownership of the. So we're not turning over.
No, they're not turning over a bunch of roads to us or anything like that.
Any other questions on resolution point three oh seven? Any public comment on resolution point three oh seven? Say none. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution number point three oh seven without monitoring?
Second.
That moved by Counselor Primmer, second by Counselor Harden, that we adopt resolution point three oh seven without a modification. Local.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number point three oh eight, the resolution to operate bombs for various city projects.
Minister Mayor, uh members of the council. So last meeting, we spent the work session kind of giving an update on a number of building projects. Uh, that are kind of in the process, and then this is a discussion of providing funding to finalize or finish those projects. So first, we're gonna just review some of the building projects, because there are two additional ones that we didn't talk about last time, and then to discuss the financing kind of proposal. So first, we talked about the Harken Rider Center, City Hall with I T space, the library, multicultural resource center. But with safety center and the arc building. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about those since we just talked about them. But the two additional projects that would be included in here are first, we'll talk about the Eotech barn project and then the North Hermiston urban renewal area project. So on the Eotech barn project, the barns that are on the property uh, right now were finished in the summer of two thousand and eighteen. And there are three barns, there's a beef barn, swine barn and small animal barn. They were built to about three quarters of what their original design size based on limited funding. But we were able to do some preparation for adding on to them. The current design allows the the addition. Without, you know, really having to um. Tear down or anything, we can just add on, the ground is prepared for foundations and things like that. So um, as funding became available that we could do something that we're talking about right now. So there there were two separate grants over two different legislative sessions that awarded money to county fairgrounds. And they total up to about one point two seven seven million. And one of those grants came directly comes directly to the city because we're the owner of the fairgrounds. The other one comes to the county, but it has to be used on fairgrounds. So they're also committed that funding to this project. Now, we sat down together and worked out kind of what what would we want to spend it on. They, this was the the project the fair was most interested in. You know, to be frank, it wasn't what the city was necessarily most interested in. But it is something that would benefit and help um. Uh, Al, as he does some of the equine events through the the spring, fall. Summer time period, be able to rent out more stall space, things like that. So the current estimate on the project is about one point six million. And so we're a little bit short from the grant funding. Neither of those grants required a match, and so we didn't have to initially commit any money. But the the so the fair is out seeking some additional funding. And uh, to try to close that gap. And what I'm proposing tonight would be some funding that could, if the fair is not successful, that we could also help close the gap. And then do one of the other projects and I'll I'll show it here. Uh, that we want that the city that would also benefit the city related to the barns. Uh, so there's some additional funding in for that. So if you look at the the left barn is the swine barn, the big one in the middle is the beef, and then you have a small animal barn on the right. And if you take a look, I don't think my pointer is gonna, I'm gonna do this. Okay. So if you see down here, this is, this is a way a scale for weighing in the animals. For the fair and for different uh, sales. So the barn extension will come about to the edge of that, just short of that, this will still be outside the perimeter of the barns. So what we're working on is to extend the the large beef barn, the swine barn. And those of you who've been at the fair recently, you know, they've they've rented a tent to kind of be in this space down here because of the number of animals that they've had. So a lot of goats and sheep were out in these uh, were out in the tent because they didn't have enough room in the barn. So that's one of the reasons they were really interested in this project. And then the one of the pieces that we were interested in was to be able to put some concrete under the small animal barn. So that in the winter time, we we've had a lot of requests, even at the old fairgrounds, they did this where they stored RVs or boats, different things. And we need a paved space, uh, a hard surface space to do that. And so doing that would it would allow Al to rent out that space during the the winter time and get a little extra funding uh, for just allowing the those vehicles to be parked there. So that's what this funding for. Eotech would be used for. Then um, the North Hermiston Urban Renewal Area Project. This is probably still a little bit fresh in your minds, the this new area was formed in twenty twenty three. Uh, it really is formed for one project, and that is to build a street connection from North Highway three ninety five to Northeast Fourth Street. Includes a traffic signal on on Highway three ninety five, and it also includes a water line. Now, the current estimate on that project is five million dollars, and that's what the, you know, all of the urban rural plan and all of those documents um. Uh, state, and so that and right now it's it's a fresh enough estimate, we think it's still pretty current. So what we would propose, oh, here's just a picture of the urban renewal area. That's the overall area. And then this is a current concept, it's not exactly, we'll be going into more um. Uh, design engineering to kind of complete this, but this is the current concept. And um, the so it's making a connection out here to fourth with signal at here at three ninety five with it matching up to the driveway here back to Home Depot. So. What we're proposing tonight um, to finance these various projects. First would be to borrow twenty million dollars as full faith and credit bonds. So this is not what we consider what a lot of people are familiar with as far as general obligation bonds, that's what the school districts and the fire district recently passed. There's no election required because there's no new tax formed. Uh, there's no new tax um, levied or anything against to pay for these projects. The current terms that we've looked at, again, these are, these are still estimates. It'd be either a twenty or a thirty year full faith and credit bond. Our current estimate on an interest rate for a thirty year bond is between four and a quarter and four point three five. The which equates to approximate payment um. For for the five million, approximately two hundred ninety two thousand and for the uh, fifteen million eight hundred and seventy one thousand for a total of about one point two million. Now, again, the five million would be repaid by the North Hermiston Renewal Urban Renewal Area. And that's why there's also action on the Urban Renewal Agency uh, agenda tonight. And the because of the urban renewal area and agencies and a relative inexperience in the bond market. Um, the city would borrow because the city can get a better rate than the Urban Renewal Agency. And then there would be a memorandum of understanding between the two groups for the Urban Renewal Agency to pay off that portion of the debt. And that's how uh, the resolutions are are structured. Then fifteen million to be paid repaid through the enterprise zone funds. Now, this next slide, I know it's got a lot of numbers, it's very busy. But um, trying to show what the cash flow looks like from from uh, the or the enterprise zone at this point. So. Currently, the only enterprise zone that funding has come into the enterprise zone from is the Lamb Weston. And that's generating five hundred thousand to the city and five hundred thousand to Umatilla County. But Umatilla County has committed all of the funding from their portion of the Lamb Weston Enterprise Zone to the city. Now, this proposed project related to the library and multicultural resource center that would commit their final portion of of that uh, enterprise zone. So and then if you look um, at that, so that's what you see in this first year, the the revenues and then the expenses underneath. And as you move in, as we move into year two and three. Um, you have the the city hall debt starts to come out as a as an expense. But if you look at the kind of the bottom line, all through that, we're building, uh, we're paying out less than we're bringing in um, on the enterprise zone at this point. And then um. Because uh, Amazon has started construction on one and is about to start construction on the second. Campus, uh, you'll see in fiscal year twenty four that about a two and a half million dollar payment. Now, these are funds that just come to the city. That there's another two and a half million that would go from the enterprise zone to Umatilla County. And and then you start to see the uh, funding start to uh, build up a little bit more quickly as you move further across the years in the FY twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. And then we've added um, a proposed, what the proposed um, debt service would be. And I took a worst case scenario, so this is um. Let's say for for whatever reason, the the enterprise own funds had to support the whole uh, debt service. This this would cover uh, that as well, even though we know the five million would be covered by the urban renewal area, just trying to make a conservative look at it. And then as we go to the next one, we're taking a look at going out, that that goes out the life of a thirty year bond with, you know, a substantial um. Reserve uh, in that enterprise own fund that we would need to start talking about a little bit more about how we're going to handle this going into the into the future. Because, you know, when we first uh, did the city hall project, we weren't, we didn't know, we had an enterprise own agreement signed, but we didn't. We didn't know when construction was going to start. But we've seen construction start on the first two campuses essentially. And they're already working with us on the third campus, starting to talk about infrastructure. And so now we can start to recognize that, you know, that these revenues are are a lot more solid as we start to look out into the future. So those are the proposal as far as the revenues. Now, I had some questions uh, related to what's our other debt that's that's out there currently. So this is, this is a table that will go would go into a um. Official statement that potential investors in the bonds would look at. And uh, so you can see um. Actually, this year we'll retire our only general obligation debt that's left um, with a payment in August. And um. So so that will, you know, that actually is going to drop off some some of the tax levy that goes against uh. The each of our property uh, owners. But then then these full faith and credit obligations are all um. All for different things, the two thousand thirteen series was the refinance of the pool. Sixteen is is a refinance of HES um, obligations. The two thousand seventeen is when we did a combination of the festival street. Some financing for Eotech and then some utility projects. And then two thousand twenty is city hall with some utility projects. And then the 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 series twenty twenty four would be to propose, and that's why those uh, boxes are just blank at this point. And then down below are just some our other types of debt. So we have leases on on a a chipper and a street sweeper that are the capital leases there. And then uh, the Funland uh, fundraising project is is that Umatilla Electric Cooperative where they agreed to finance basically the the commitments of businesses and the other entities uh, into the future, so. With that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to entertain a discussion or questions.
On that, can you go back that?
Oh, sure.
So what is the uh? Full paid credit allowable city person?
I I don't know, I mean, I think allowable comes up to whether the bond the bond buyers would buy the bonds, that we have the ability to pay.
How much could we borrow up to?
See, I I don't think there is a limit on the full faith and credit. I think on a general obligation basis, you would you would have a limit based on how much um. Market value you have or assessed value, but not on the full faith and credit. I did along those lines, I did talk to our financial advisor just uh, because he did, part of this is to also do some debt ratios and and things. And um, they took a look at ours, we're either we're in the range of a of an A credit uh, with standard and fours with our debt ratios. We were on, one of the ratios were a little high, the other one, we're right, right on what they would expect from a municipal bond.
The other question I had was regards to the, I would say, just an estimate eleven point five, is that our responsibility on that? Or is that also the buyers?
No, that also, that includes the 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 fire and the the amount we've secured in grant funding for a seismic. So we we um. We're only proposing that um. Seven and a half million of that twenty B would be for the public safety center.
So not the eleven point five, how much of that?
Seven point.
Seven point five, not eleven point five.
Right.
So the fire side is only has to come up with four.
Well, we have two and a half in a grant for the seismic that goes kind of on both sides. And then the fire would be the red remainder of that.
And so we also are out talking to state legislators and uh, funding other opportunities for that as well. So if that came in, then we wouldn't have to borrow as much of that.
That's correct.
Okay, so obviously we wouldn't need twenty million if we got some of that funded through the state.
Yeah, and and if we would, were able to do that, we could. That they would be structured such that we can pay them early so we could pay off, you know, what we hadn't spent. Do that for it back.
Card, yes, I can. Uh, just uh, so I have a fair understanding on the Umatilla Electric part of this. So my understanding is that back when we did that process, that you could up to entities could up to five years make an annual commitment. Are we now at the end or within certain amount of time at the end of that five year process?
We are, I think we're in the third year, I want to say.
Okay. Yes, Council.
So Eotech is not, you know, it its revenues are not covering all the its its expenses. We use uh, transient room tax, hotel tax to cover the difference. So in the essence of, there's no property tax going to subsidize it, but there is some hotel tax.
There's no current debt on Eotech that's owed by the city?
Only that that we we did borrow two million, uh, again, secured by the hotel tax.
Sorry.
We started talking about the library base to make it our last meeting. So this is a part of the resolution here. Yes, and the task to pay for that, right? Okay, because I have some problems with how uh. Will we put the stairs in the middle of the top floor and then going down? I think all of that is just way too expensive that the sign is. And uh, so um. I think that since we just started discussing that, we should if everyone's focusing to that.
Yeah, we approved the designs of that yet.
No.
So this is a borrow up to the full amount, so if we change your mind, we would fund for one five.
Correct.
And also. I don't know if it's possible, but instead of having so many things on one resolution, if we do like a line item, we will get definitely use separates one that we want to pass, still have your phone.
Well, the 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 reason for putting them all on one is because we save money borrowing it all together.
Well, I've got to have our, you have to progress, which is supposed to look like one, like the uh. Sydney Holland, which is twenty three eighty, library twenty two oh nine.
Right, I mean, I I'm just, and that's again, going back to the reason it's all on one is because we're going to use one financing mechanism.
And you're giving the administration the authorization to execute. And you're giving the administration the authorization to execute the delivery of the full paid credit obligation financing. So in order to put it all together, one package that would progress and prudent.
And so we we can get it cheap, we can do it cheaper by doing that all together rather than doing an individual bond issue for each project. So that's why it's not separated in a separate resolution.
Uh I would like to know that the. Council, your city employees allowed by the bonds? Or because we're for the city, you don't just go on here that you you're not allowed to?
Well, mostly the, I mean, this is gonna be like the stock market where um I, you know. I guess I technically, I'm just gonna use myself as an example, I technically could try, you know, hire somebody to go and find this bond and help me buy it. But most of the time, these are bought in large chunks by um, you know, Pers or large uh retirement systems. Or or other investors like that that buy, you know, they'll buy a million of this or they'll buy two million of this. And so. You know, I might have a a mon- uh. A fund that's got a lot of bonds combined in it, and that fund might buy some of this, and so. I have some ownership in it, but that probably I'm not gonna be able to go out and buy one bond, and and so an individual isn't gonna be able to go out and buy one of those bonds. I I often, I mean, part of this process that goes forward is they'll decide what the denomination of those bonds are. They, meaning our financial advisors, will give us advice as to what's the best. Yeah. So we will, we'll work out whether that, you know, we sell five hundred thousand dollar chunks. Or if it'll be a million dollar chunks or something like that. So probably an individual, unless they're very wealthy, are not gonna buy this bond by themselves.
I wanna thank the city manager, I was able to have a conversation with our employer, right, council with this. There is, there's lots to be asked, and uh a lot of those things prepared, so I really appreciate uh that interest. I did wanna ask um. Talking about said money, right, so um what you presented up there was a bond for thirty years, is that right? I guess, is there? Is there, I guess, comparisons between a twenty year and a thirty year bond, and what does that look like financially?
Yeah, it looks like it's mine.
What's your purchase?
I borrow you.
It's more.
Richer and toxic.
It's more.
So um. Yes, and and right now, we're kind of still operating off of just estimates from our financial advisor, but. They have shown us that it would be a better interest rate at a twenty year, and again, you'd pay less interest, so as we get. Closer to that time of going out to market the bonds and sell them, we would decide whether it would be twenty or thirty and and all of that interest rate, but we would. We would save money if we went with a twenty instead of a thirty. Well, that's, that's kind of the worst scenario. In a lot of ways. So that's why I wanted to show the thirty versus twelve.
And uh your decision on which one you go with is gonna be based on. What that that rate looks like and the affordability of it.
Correct.
Just like you would with your home.
Right.
Ask for the question.
I just comment, uh if there's a lot, a lot more questions than any.
Uh questions, council? Did you have any questions yet, Council?
So looking at the um. Well, first off, a comment in terms to um if I understood Councilwoman's question correctly, and that was. The idea of having everything sectioned off and saying like, okay, if we are agreeing that these items will then be. Put into this measure, so like I'm looking at the E O tech farms project and saying, okay, well, we have a grant for this much. And we're saying that we would then have to pay this much. Is is it possible that we only do how much we have a grant for? But since it's all in one big sandwich. As opposed to having the ingredients out, it's it's kind of an all around thing. And it it makes it difficult to say, okay, either we're saying all yes or all no, um or send it back to the table. Um and so if if I'm. Getting what your question was, uh because I'm looking at thinking, well, um yeah, we just only. You know, go for what we have granted as opposed to end in borrowing something, even if it needs scaling back for right now.
Yeah, I mean, that that is something that we, we are actually right now only going forward with parts that we can. Pay for with the grant funding. But hopefully that we can secure some additional funding to finish them, and and a lot of this, you know. Especially over the past few years, we've seen a lot of increase in construction costs, and so trying to do some of this. Before we, you know, see another five to seven year or five to seven percent a year inflation rate. And we, that's one of our, that's part of our thinking with doing it all.
The council could elect to make obligations, representation, and that is one of your options here under alternatives.
Yes.
That was the case. Councilman, did you have another question?
Okay, I did on the debt ratio.
Okay.
Okay, so that how much debt we are in for, it works as a total direct debt?
So she's, she shared information that we all have access to?
Yeah, so I emailed all of this uh to all the. What was the question?
Did you, uh, Mr. City Manager, did you hear my question? You want me to repeat it?
If you could repeat it, because I was looking for.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, we did, Michael, we figured it. Okay, I was asking um on your debt ratios, is this the total amount of debt that we're in?
Yeah, so um the the city direct debt is debt that um. Is not secured by some other source, so it doesn't count. Uh any of the utility debt, so any of the H E S or water store debt that's in there that's secured by uh rates. And that's what then it says overlapping direct debt, that's what that. Number captures is also that utility debt.
The amount of all that is just.
And then that's the total of those two combined.
Other questions? Yes, Council.
I just wanna comment on, I mean, this is a, this is definitely a package, but our. Our council goal setting session, we've talked about premises to town transitioning into the city, and and there has a lot of growing needs. Uh traffic, public safety, you name it. So I think uh this package will really be able to prepare us for the future, for the down. Uh speaking on E O tech, I know that uh stakeholders have been wanting that ever since the pandemic ended. The bonds were regularly packed, uh and so. This was a a big ticket item that a lot of uh people on the board, especially the parent of rodeo, were very excited about and were able to. To land a one point three million uh state funding. I know we still have water that we're that we're shooting for as a council, uh but as right now, that's that's been the big project that E O tech's come out with. Uh and everything kind of else, uh public safety is gonna be a huge priority, and so I'm I'm really excited about this part more than anything else. So I I stand, I stand ready to support this resolution. Just part of it, thanks, City Manager, uh next staff of.
So, Mr. Schmitt, obviously, this is a big. Big debt undertaken by the council. So revenue streams. Some of those are already guaranteed, right, so a lot of land less than money is already in motion, right? So some of the P D X money, it too is already in motion.
Right, two of the three, we would consider them under construction, so.
Worst case scenario, then build the three.
Okay.
What does that look like from a, from a? How we get out of this situation and make sure that people uh don't end up with a debt that we can't afford?
Well, I think even if you pulled out that third campus going across, we will still have. Yeah, we would still have funding to meet this obligation and the others that we have made. So then there are obviously some. Uh revenue that we have for, right, so we're. Putting future councils at a disadvantage by spending all this money today. That there may be other needs that come up in a year, five year, ten years that potentially uh we could use some of those funds for as well. Correct. Any idea of margin between what we're borrowing and interest versus what the revenue? We're expecting this.
What the net potential is for future councils to consider?
Well, I mean, it it really shows that on the, on the bottom line across all of those, each year. You know, it accumulates what's building up, so if you wanna look. So this one. Yeah, so if you go to fiscal twenty eight. Which is the end of that top line. Um and that's without, it's only with, that that I guess it does include one payment. One point six. Yeah, so, but you're still at 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 that point, seven million dollars, you can look at five million dollars. In the in the positive, and you're still gonna get all of the other streams throughout that time. Um sorry, I don't have that, I have an active spreadsheet where I could just pop it out, but.
Sorry, I can't respond to that, but just wanna make sure that there is actually more revenue coming in for the bedding ourselves too, and that future council will also have an opportunity. Dress the community needs, go forward in the future generation.
Yes.
Any other? Questions about council? Yeah. Okay, so. Just uh, just recently, we were. We behind the eight ball. And we're okay.
Well, that's why, I mean, these, it it's kind of like the the whole question of, you know, buying land. With utility funds, so our utilities fund themselves. And using some of their money as an investment in land, that was a different way, but that money doesn't necessarily go right to the general fund if we we want it to. And this is the same here, right now, now, these dollars, as as we start to see the third campus come online, we might wanna talk about. Could this money, can we count it? As ongoing revenue, right now, this looks like one time revenue. From my perspective, and so putting it into operational costs is not a good. Good choice, in my my opinion. And so, but if these. If this, and then if we add another campus in the near future, I mean, then we're starting to talk about a a long string of. Kind of ongoing revenue, we could talk about whether some of that could start to come to the general fund. And help with operational costs. But as of this, you know, putting this up, this is really one time revenue for at one time projects.
Hi. Stephanie, people's thirty five, we'll see you trying. Uh I just wanted, since it is a, it's been mentioned quite a bit, but it is a like a big bulk package deal here. Um I don't, I I don't know how well that is, but I'm the current president of France with her to library. And uh all of us that are, would just like to plead to you to please put as much money as possible into the library, it's a lot. For the community, and as uh Councilman saying, you know, these city services are extremely important, um and. We are always looking to more further community there, so uh, you know, when you're building all these big beautiful things, please remember the guys across the street, we let you move in, remember? You can handle the usual. Uh so we would just love to see that project continue and and, you know, at at whatever fast, but definitely don't forget us, please, thank you.
Stephanie, thank you for uh being a volunteer as well and serving the capacity um. That's why, you know, we had difficult conversations recently about how to find revenue, as long as they're seeking for us, so I'm sure that they're still operational. And we're not having to cut people hours and those sort of things, so thank you for uh volunteering. Others, what a comment. Okay, um can I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty three oh? Okay, if I was wondering who was gonna get that, I think it was, it was approved by uh Council McCarthy that we adopt resolution twenty three oh eight, that modification second by Council Row. Roll call.
Yes, yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know if you could hear, Council President was a yes, so that's uh five to one, Council moving opposition. Okay, we're gonna move on to resolution twenty three oh nine, designate no parking in Dogwood Abbey from northwest street to northwest side street.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, rooms of the council, so um this is a proposal to designate uh both sides of West Dogwood. Between Spruce and Second Street as no parking, um this spot has um. Attracted a lot of uh long term parking um and almost camping, and so uh. This is just another kind of piece of the toolbox to help code enforcement and the police officers kind of. Police that area and try to keep it uh, keep it safe. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, Mr. Schmitt, the question I had in regards to this, couple of questions, you and I have talked about this before, when are we gonna pave those areas over there? There's gotta be a couple of the old streets in town that don't pay. Secondly, um are we? Were we just would have banned it on problem, or we actually fixing problem, and if if this were. Business were to develop better and you wanted on the street parking there to help that business, could you repeal that notice?
Yes, to that, to the last question, yes, absolutely, to the the other question about paving, I mean. You know, there's, there's a few paved streets, I know Council Hardin always talks to me about this. Issue as well, that there's a few unpaved streets around around the city, and should we kind of finish those out? That's uh something that could be talked about um. Sure, but.
That's that quarter that are at Starbucks, Pizza Hut, they're pretty good here for theirs, so.
Yeah, and you know, and, you know, I I don't feel like it's a bandaid necessary, I think it's another tool, is it gonna absolutely solve it? No, but it gives uh the officers, both code enforcement and police officers, that another tool to help kind of keeping people from camping.
So we're not supposed to camp during that, right?
Correct.
So the code enforcement goes out there, it's a longer process than it's it's actually real parking and.
Right, and and we, the the changes that you made to actually last time, I think, gives code enforcement a little more. Uh authority on the parking side as well, so they can utilize this as well as the officers themselves.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, there was a big, a big truck there, uh eighteen wheeler type truck.
And burn the truck there.
Now that you can't put this.
Any comment on resolution twenty three oh nine? Can I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty three oh nine and designate this portion of West Dogwood in Appleton? So, we're by Council Hardin, second by the Council Per, we adopt resolution twenty three oh nine. I present a.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Resolution twenty three ten, uh revise city design standards and specifications.
I'm Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is simply to, uh, we've gotten into a cycle here these past years of trying to keep our city public work standards updated on a regular basis. We've updated the past several years on an annual basis, so it's simply. Uh, taking uh feedback from our engineers, the industry associates, feedback from the private development community. Uh, as well as contractors about minor tweaks and upgrades at this point. So. Like go through some of the minor components that are being upgraded, but for the most part, they are pretty. If you have any questions, you know what they are, uh, we're now at a point where we are able to just make these minor changes every year. I know it's a very large document, apologize for that. Uh, we had some debate just a little bit. Better not to weave in, it's transparent, to include it all, but for the most part.
So this is not making building more difficult than. Correct, okay. So, I mean, that's what kinda get beat up. Cities a lot of times is the processes aren't easy, are easy, or expensive or cumbersome. This is just uh. Improving technol- or technological standards, so we're up to codes with some of these um special building.
Correct, and best practices.
Best. Good. Other questions, council? Any public comment on resolution twenty three ten? Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution? Some second, moved by councillor Miller, second by councillor McCarthy. That we adopt resolution twenty three ten, I present a roll call.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Resolution twenty three eleven, adopt the immunity liability for use of trails or structures in public use. Or unimprovided provided by, provided in O R S one oh five, one six sixteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so. There's a, a case involved in the city of Newport's and where recreational immunity was uh. Significantly weakened for cities that provide, I think, even pub-private uh landlords as well, that open their land up for public use. Public recreational use. That uh, that they would have some immunity from things that could happen there. And so a um, it, it went through a trial court where they sided with the city and the appeals court. Um, disagree with that and um, now it's back. Where they're having a trial to determine whether somebody who was walking their dog on the way to the beach. To recreate, was recreating while they were on their way. And so um, um, we. Uh, we've been working closely with uh CIS, our insurance company, the League of Cities. And CIS is requesting that we, that there's a state statute that we can. Kind of adopt um or, or opt into that gives us some additional um immunity protection. Uh, even if this court case continues to go the wrong, uh, the opposite direction. Um, and so um. That's why this resolution is in front of you. Also, the League of Cities is putting forward a solution, a legislative solution to try to change the statute. Be more clear what uh, what the, the goal of recreational immunity was. Um. And then um, we're also going to uh put up some additional signage along trails in particular. Um, to try to be clear, um, who's responsible for themselves. And so uh CIS actually gave us a five thousand dollar grant to do the trails and air the signs and so forth, and so. Uh Parks Recreation is working on that piece of it and we're asking that you improve this resolution so we can. Protect ourselves the best we can uh from a loss.
It's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, I, I mean, in the big picture, yes, it, it really.
It could cost us a lot.
Hostless, and you know, there, there is at least one county that I've, I've seen some, that they closed some trails because of this, cuz they didn't wanna accept the.
It's bad for cities, it's also bad for the users, uh, because.
Exactly.
Some of those facilities they're closing off now to access because they're afraid of being sued. That's what they're being sued for lots of money. And so CIS is our insurance agent.
Correct.
Okay, and so they're working with us to make sure that cities are um. Putting in processes or uh putting in places to protect. Uh, cities and taxpayer revenues and money that they're paying, but also trying to create. The opportunity to keep those facilities open.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's something that the state of Oregon in general has tried very hard to make this a good place to come and. Enjoy the outdoors and protect spaces like that, and then this really hampers the ability to, to do that without putting yourself in a lot of. My ability.
Does this change, so right now in short, less light session, they are looking to address this, so. Would that's what we're doing tonight be changed by anything that they do during less light session?
No, I think this would just be an enhancement of kind of a warning that basically. You're responsible to be safe and we're not, we're not providing for your safety kind of thing as you use our trails. That's kind of the, the gist of the signage.
Any other questions? Yes, council. I just wanna comment that this topic came up at the um. Parks Committee meeting uh where we actually had a motion for unanimous, that, that was unanimous, uh to support passing this resolution. Okay, any other questions?
This was, this is, this is not the, this is not the first time that recreational immunity has been challenged.
That's correct, and that's about five years ago, we haven't noticed similar.
We went through something similar to this when somebody didn't fill in forms, had tripped over it.
Yeah, they, they tried to, then they were trying to sue the employee directly.
Right.
And saying that, that the city's immunity didn't extend to its employees, and so we had to go in and get a legislative fix for that as well.
This, this is something that is constantly evolving just due to the litigious man nature of public.
Yes.
Any other public comment on resolution twenty three oh? Can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty eleven? Second, moved by councillor Lynn, second by councillor McCarthy that we adopt. Resolution twenty three oh eleven in May one. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Orders number twenty three fifty five, ordinance amended chapters fifty one and fifty two of the Hermiston Municipal Code by increasing the due and payable date for sewer water and solid waste bills. From within ten days to twenty days, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so. The increased time that it takes the mail to move now, so if, if somebody, when we mail from here to. Those Portland comes back and all that. Um, it puts our customers in jeopardy of, of having late fee just by the length of time it takes the mail to move. Then to, then if they were to pay by mail, that would even make it worse, so this just gives a little more comfort. For them to be able to pay their bill on time and, and uh, it will. I mean, it might delay our revenue slightly, but not, it's not enough to, I, I think it's better that we take care of them and. And make sure that they can pay their bills in a timely fashion. So that's what the changes are. It changes it in sewer code and the, and water section.
Uh, thank you. I don't know if it brought this to your attention or if that was something that staff did, say, hey, you can't get a term on time.
Well, that really came from our front desk folks as they were, having people come in and show, look, I just, I just got this, I can't. You know, and so, you know, they, they didn't wanna have to kind of enforce those kinds of limits.
I appreciate staff bringing that over, you know, bringing that attention too, so that's it, so. Makes common sense.
Any other questions or comments for the council? Yes, that's, I'm glad to see, glad to see us doing, this is one thing, it's, it's not for us, it's for, it's for the people. And I appreciate. That you're bringing this to us. My dad, um, he still pays bills with text, he likes to get a text cuz it's nice to order, he, it's all the metal stuff, yes. I agree with that, thank you.
Okay, sure. All right, uh, any public comment on ordinance number twenty three fifty five? Right, mayor requesting first reading of the ordinance to be put on by town, I'm false for roll call, roll call. Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Tubman.
Reading by title only, ordinance number two three five five, ordinance amending chapters fifty one and fifty two of the Hermiston Municipal Code. By increasing the due and payable date for sewer water and solid waste bills from within ten days to twenty days.
Mayor requested the ordinance be put on the final adoption this game, that's cited legally by title only, false for roll call. Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Tubman.
Second reading by title only at ordinance number two three five five. An ordinance amending chapters fifty one and fifty two of the Hermiston Municipal Code by increasing the due and payable date for sewer water. And solid waste bills from within ten days to twenty days.
Uh, can I get a motion on ordinance number twenty five, adopt it, third days after adoption, let's see, council. Second, moved by councillor Purman, second by councillor McCarthy, that's ordinance number twenty five, adopt it, third days after adoption, let's see, council, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All business.
Until the hero.
That's all, okay. Uh, city committee reports, any committee reports? Yeah, councillor Purman.
Uh, so I m- mentioned we have the Parks Committee meeting uh just this last week. And uh, well attended, we had our, our new um. Pointed person show up, uh, who we, we uh agreed to tonight, and he was still there, uh, just participating, and he's excited to participate. Um, we had a nice recap of a lot of the work that Parks and Rec has been doing um with the past history, seeing some of the steps. Projects we've taken, uh, as well as the liability uh option that we talked about just a moment ago. And then also um. Just want to make sure I get this correctly, is that um. The uh, Simran Park is moving along and we're actually in process for a. Four hundred thousand dollar grant uh to help with that. Uh, will also be similar to when we did the. Park up on uh, you know, Highland area, sorry, not Highland, um, near Loma Vista. Uh, we are gonna hold another naming convention uh for the public to give their input on what they'd like this new park to be. So we're, we're making progress and it's kind of checking on. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Dr. Brown?
Yes, so we, we had an E O Tech meeting, uh, we talked about four different things, uh, we talked about barn expansion, which has already come before council. They gave us an update already on what they're doing out there, uh, hoping to still be ready by the end of the week. Uh, that's the goal. We also had an update on the heroes, um. They should be delivering about six poles, six bike poles, and there's gonna be a couple volunteers putting those up. Uh, so they are having their first uh match, March thirtieth, and they're calling it the ice break. So, here was this launching on the thirtieth, um, we had an operations update by Al and told us a couple of things that were going on. Uh, we talked about our branding, so we talked about here on council, that, that's finally going up. They're gonna start seeing some of the new branding on the E O Tech building, so that's to come. Uh, we also had a pickleball presentation, so honestly, that was the most packed that E O Tech test bit. And it was good, uh, it was really, really good, uh, the ideas that came forward, uh, we had Mr. Adam Walker, Mr. Paul. Uh, present and talk about the present, or project that they're testing, wanting to do, they're wanting to have it on the E O Tech and that was. The reason for being there and unfortunately, when we talked to the, when we had a conversation in our twenty-year plan for, master plan for E O Tech. We have expansions planned up there and we also have to have an adequate amount of parking to spit the, the expansions that are gonna happen out there. And so we, the E O Tech came to kind of a difficult decision saying that. There is no room up there because everything's already been planned for the E O Tech, and so. We talked to them about several different solutions, um, city manager Smith is kind of working and discussing maybe other options that the city might have. Or even the school district might have to be able to partner um with pickleball, so they have a couple of different parks, a cou- couple of different places that they've been trying. Um, so uh, we are still working with them and we're still supporting them uh and trying to find a new home. So uh, whether that's up at E O Tech or somewhere else, um, that's kind of, it's long to discussion. I know uh councillor Primer, uh, also, councillor Primer and I also discussed about uh. Amazon personal that we just recently, I guess, acquired from Amazon. We just discussed a lot of different plans that might be potentially portable across at, 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 I'm sorry, pickleball. At the end of the day, I think best person for that is city administration, city manager, who's gonna work with them, see what can be to support them. Um, they are gonna need about an acre, and so that's the difficult part, um, the courts, parking, everything that kind of comes with it. Uh, other than that, um, I, I believe that that was about it, that's my guy on my end, so. If I'm missing anything, city manager Smith or the council president, um, please go ahead.
The only, the only addition I would put on that is that because of the discussion and the amount of, of uh. Ideas, things are going off, we decided that, I mean, the next meeting was gonna be stronger for me. You're gonna have another meeting in March twenty first to further this, the discussion. It's, you know, it's, you know, as, as, you know, you, you yourself brought up earlier, Mr. Mayor, uh, the pickleball is, is a growing thing and it's. Growth seems to be exponential at the time, so. My, my concern on it was that I brought forward is, was the uh. E O Tech is a multi-use facility in the area that they wanted to basically, you know, this was going to be, it was gonna be a single use. Only could be, be used for pretty much anything else, and that's wrong. So, um, whether that's a, whether that's a fixable problem up there or. Whether you turn, you go someplace, you find a different location for them and, you know, often with that. If we, we, we're definitely, you know, it's a, it's a. It's a situation we wanna be able to help with, but at the same time. We don't have all.
So, Mr. Smith, um, you know, in that conversation. This is an organization, I think, has wanted to work with city and trying to totally locate some sort of, whether that's. With the city or the school district or a partner thereof. Is it possible, cuz I think some of the things that they run into is this mimism, right, that nobody wants it next to their house cuz of the noise. And so, is it possible now with some of the technology that they've developed that. We could institute, it's required that they use certain types of. Pals, balls, so they're quiet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they're all the way there yet with the quiet technology. I think all those companies are working on it. Because it's happening, I mean, the noise complaints are coming everywhere around the country where the facilities go. So, I mean, I think we potentially could, you know, like for, for uh tournaments or something like that. It'd be really hard on a day-to-day basis to enforce, and you can only use this kind of equipment if you're just. You know, the neighbor down the street, you wanna play, that's a harder bit on terms, we could probably make some improvements.
Yeah, just so ca- council's also aware, I believe the city has been really trying to, to help this group by the whole, um. I think definitely a number of parts were definitely kind of offered for space other than just E O Tech. So I, I think it's still an ongoing process because the group is, really wants to be able to work with the community. Even not going as far as saying that they, they were gonna pay for the field and the development and eventually turn it over to the city, so. Uh, we definitely wanna support them and, to be honest, as like as a committee member up there, you wanna say yes. Uh, but we also have other responsibilities as committee members that we also have to uphold, and so. It was really hard to say it, or hard to say no, and so I, I have faith in our city. And our city manager to, to find some solutions to that. So, yeah, as an E O Tech committee, it was, it was difficult. again, as an EOTech committee, it was, it was difficult, but I know that's not the last that we're going to see.
Have they probably been talked about as part of the session?
That, we can, we can't use those for a permanent structure just because they're on board property.
Because you can put concrete down, is that what you're saying?
Well, but they, they don't want to just put concrete down, they want to put, you know, fences and all that kind of stuff.
And those are considered, those fence down, that separates their.
But, but you're talking about something a little higher, with, with screening, anyway, we've been brainstorming some ideas even just today, uh, that Brendan and I are gonna meet with, the pickleball committee and talk a little more. Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we want to help them find a spot, uh, we just, and it may be that that spot might have a few neighbors, I mean, we have to figure it out, we'll do what we can, try to find the best spot for the community.
All right, any other committee reports?
Just a question on that, we don't have an existing, um, commitment to the pickleball entity, I'm not sure whether, there's no existing promise, we just want to try and help, is that one?
Well, I mean, we, uh, we have said we want to try to help you find, and we have a lot of park space, so we've tried to say, well, here, what about here, what about here, so, I mean, but we haven't, like, signed a, a deal to let them have some property.
This is the issue.
Yeah.
We, we did, I should follow up, um, during our Parks Committee meeting, we did see a list of proposed sites, um, none of them seem like a great idea yet, for one reason or another, there's a problem at one location, it's a different problem at another location, that, that moving to that one solved. Uh, so that's, that's been the challenge, finding stuff that meets all of the criteria, uh, so.
Well, people, other committee reports?
Um, I did go to a Steppenstone Alliance meeting on Wednesday, uh, they're continuing to make good progress on facility, still some electrical issues, um, I think they've set like March eighth, and something like that, or potential moving date.
Yeah, now that the, the pullback is, the well water needs to have some coronation to meet drinking water standards, and the coronation equipment is, is coming, I think it's supposed to be here within about a week and a half, and then, uh, time to set it up, test it, and as soon as that's ready, then they can, they can open, everything else has been, is prepared, electric's all done, and.
And it, it's not one of the groundwater issues that.
No, it's not.
Pivotal issue.
Right, it, it's just kind of general drinking water standards, it's not like drinks.
Yeah, they continue to get lots of, um, you know, Jesslyn's done an amazing job of reaching out to volunteers and, and, uh, recruiting resources, they've got a couple bands now that are allocated to help, you know, be people movers, and a lot of community members have stepped forward and, you know, those wish lists that they send out, I'm sure you guys have all seen them, but, you know, hey, we need water, we need fruit cuts, we need snacks, you know, whatever those are, and people are continuing to fill out those wish lists, so appreciate the community's support for that project, looking forward to this, uh, hoping.
Uh, mayor's report, um, I just want to say thank you to all the councillors for our ninth annual retreat, um, and working with Sarah and Ashley. SSW.
SSW.
SSW, uh, they've, they've been a great, uh, resource for us in trying to, um, work with the administration, we do a, for everybody's reminder, recommend for review, uh, council has an evening where we meet with department heads, kind of talk about status updates on a lot of the projects, and then the next day we go through, uh, um, retreat, where we do some policy design, and kind of review where we're at, policy-wise or priority-wise, get an update, and then set, uh, new priorities, and it's been a wonderful process for the council to go through, we do that every year. So I just want to say thank you to the council for all being able to make it this year, Councilman Brown specifically, because he ended up figuring out how he was gonna get around work, and, so, uh, quite a lot worked out for everybody to make it and be here again, one of the process, and so, thanks, Sarah, and her group, we enjoyed it, and Lily did an amazing job, made sure we had good food. Um, I just want to remind folks too about, uh, March fourteenth, Reach Project, River Plate. So, Ruby Cunnings at three.
Correct, Ruby Cunnings at three, I, um, I've arranged for a tour for the council at six, I thought, try to wait for everybody to have a chance to get up working, so.
They'll be doing tours a lot.
Yeah, and through seven o'clock, so, anytime, anytime from three to seven.
So, for everybody's, um, review, the Reach Project is our acute metapublic, so, you know, we, so, uh, we're going to CCS finally, uh, yeah, I mean, it's been built for several years, we just haven't had it certified and, and approved and staffed, so we'll be, they'll be open that on March fourteenth, three p.m., River Plate.
I wasn't sure where, where to talk about this, but, um, I just want to say, uh, thank you to the public, uh, for putting in for so many positions, we only have one committee that has any positions open right now, which is planning commission, and I anticipate we'll probably get handful of those reapplying if we don't get any new applicants there, but that's basically, I think, for the first time in, I don't know, a long time, that we probably have no vacancies, um, so that's fantastic that we're doing that. I also want to encourage everyone, since we only have about a month left, you have about a month if you want to run for mayor, um, or judge, for that matter, um, and then just after that, we'll have, uh, the city council, uh, positions open up for at-large councillors, so if you live inside the city limits, you'll be able to do that. Right, and I hope that, uh, the option to sign up will be made, but the election for the mayor and judge part will be made, and then, uh, will be the actual election for city council.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good points. Um, any other, do you want to say something?
Yeah, just gonna bring up the fact that there's a, uh, a Measure One Ten Community Forum being hosted by Greg Smith this, uh, this weekend, it's been coming up on the seventeenth, Saturday, at Riverfront Center in Borben, it's, uh, ten to eleven thirty, I was wanting to make your, make your thoughts, you know, it's a, it's a great place. Obviously, Mr. Mr. Smith is a, uh, a proponent of this name, and helping us, that'd be key, you know, he knows as well what, uh, what Measure One Ten has been, you know, the best intentions, uh, were waylaid for all intents and purposes, of course, that's my personal opinion, so, um, but yeah, please, if you, uh, if you want to get your, get your thoughts heard on that matter, pretty please, you shouldn't wrap up, show up.
Um, Mr. Smith was recently appointed to be a Health Care Committee, um, on drug and all things, can't remember the title of that committee is, but they're looking to address, uh, the short, ultimate Measure One Ten, so his recent appointment has, um, increased his desire to reach out to the community, and make sure that everybody does not participate in that conversation, that's not the only opportunity you have. Session is open right now, you can go in and testify, and they're making either, you know, uh, in-person testimony, you can do a Zoom testimony, you can also send in written testimony, so if you have feeling or thoughts that you would like to express specifically to the entire committee, uh, the opportunity to participate as well, so, but this one, uh, appreciate Representative Smith hosting, Riverfront Lodge, ten to eleven thirty on Saturday. Anything else, else? Yes, House Pearson.
So, um, just kind of a lightly personal shout out, as you know, Carol Bunnby, today's her birthday, and, um, so Carol is quite the civil do-gooder, started the local Parkinson's support group, Lions Club member, and Oliver, one of my favorite people, which on the planet, um, and so it's Carol's birthday, um, and, and you probably know Charlie, um, who basically is like thinking that he's hiding last Christmas, but he's about to tell him where it is, um, but the club guys are fantastic people, and yeah, today's Carol Bunnby's birthday, so if you know anyone with Parkinson's that live locally, keep an eye out, because quite often she will post that support groups are made up, she started the local one, because there wasn't one, and she's like, well, I guess there is now, um, so, yeah, happy birthday to Carol. But.
Yeah, that's very incredible, she, Carol and Charlie have been amazing civic volunteers and community, um, committed people, uh, they currently, Charlie as well, Carol's project was, right, it was a big issue for her, and she was one of the cheerleaders behind one thing, the first building, here to be, so, Charlie now is working on our, usually handicap, uh, that's the correct word, town map, what do we get one? Oh, I think it's, okay, April, so it's closing already, did you have it? Yeah, we have, we've got, we just need to install it, right, yeah, so it's a project we've been working on for over a year, I think, Charlie's kind of been leading the way with that, so, yeah, they've been great, um, civic, uh, committed folks, so, yeah, please pass along our, back to birth conditions to Carol. Other council, um, how about our youth advisor, it's good to have you.
It's a pleasure to see everyone again, uh, I just want to, uh, reverberate what, uh, Mr. Otter said earlier, uh, celebrate for seven brothers, we have our next show on Friday, and that'll be our senior night, um, and we'll have two more shows on Saturday, one in the morning at two P M. and one at nine at seven P M. Um, for our Friday show, even though, I know I saw Mr. Smith there, I don't think any of the other city council members have gone, even if you have gone, or you haven't gone, I will encourage you to go to the Friday show, mostly because I believe it will be a very special night that day. And one more thing, I, I, I'm not going to present it just yet, it's a project that I want to present to the city council, or later on, I want to make some blueprints first, it's a, um, I guess it's an introduction to maybe a new, how do I say, a, uh, renewing the intersection between South First Street and East Highland, uh, East Highland Avenue, uh, it's the intersection right in front of the high school, I've seen a lot of, uh, what you say, during, uh, lunch hour, or during, after school gets out, there's a lot of, a lot of traffic, it is very difficult for substudents to cross, some of us don't. I, I will say this, I don't, uh, I don't say this to be rude, I'm one of the students as well, some of us don't know how to drive, uh, we're, but I don't want to have, have any accidents, because some of us, some of the new drivers, we're very new, we don't know exactly, uh, we haven't been in practice for a long time for, with driving, and what I was going to make a blueprint for was a a type of roundabout that would prioritize both, um, pedestrians and, uh, vehicles, but the older issue I'm running into is making it big enough for the buses as well, but it's, it's a project that I hope that I can demonstrate to the city council, and it will be, I, what I hope will be successful, and, uh, there was one more, um, I, I apologize, I apologize, uh, it was the young man, I was the, uh, it was the mister and the missus that came up, um, uh, up here to speak about is here to speak about the, uh, problem about not knowing, uh, or, I can't remember, was the void pending?
Vacancy.
Big, 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 big committee, um, I also didn't, personally didn't know about that, and I truly do appreciate you guys for coming out and speaking about that, I and I really do hope that, I don't, I don't want to say that it's, I really do want to have the, uh, I don't want to have a doubt in my mind that you guys will see this, and you guys will listen to their voices, and say that we'll absolutely listen to them, and try to, uh, make sure that everyone or anyone get into this committee, that'll be it, thank you.
Thank you. I encourage you probably, you may work with clients, uh, in designing requirements for that intersection, you probably guess my ideas, we've talked about a roundabout over there, um, and the size of that scope, uh, of what that would take, and all the problems that require, that, that, so, you're right, it's a bad intersection, we've been talking about it for a long time, trying to fix it, we need a underpass or a overpass. Plenty of money, that's what we needed to make that happen, to build a, a bridge, bridge, people bridge. All right, uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes, you stole the, the, the Reach Project, I was gonna announce that, but then, um, I just want to give kudos to some city staff, Lily, uh, Heather, and our I T support. This, if you look up on the screen now, this is what's going out, is, uh, we've been working on this for, since we got city hall open, is to utilize the cameras that are already up, and not have to have Daniel over there moving the camera around, and so this was our first night to try it out, it seemed to work pretty well, but, um, it gives, uh, somebody a chance to, to see all the different things that are going on in the meeting, and so just want to give kudos to our I T staff, Sam, who's here making sure everything goes well tonight on the first night, and Lily and Heather worked hard, and long, we're working to report, make sure we get it all functioning, so.
Trying to be pretty, Daniel?
We're trying to give him the night off.
Well, good job, guys, uh, you know, just trying to, again, increase our public participation and transparency of our meetings, and trying to be more inclusive, so, more participate, so, good job. Thank you for booking. Any else, Mr. Smith?
That's it.
Yeah.
And so that so that is going out on both the YouTube and the Zoom meeting?
Yes.
No, no special.
That's it, thanks.
Okay, we do have a Hermiston Urban renewal agency meeting tonight, so I'm gonna adjourn the city council meeting, and reconvene the renewal agency meeting, and to talk about per, uh, resolution number twenty, or contract to reconstruct Southeast Second Street, Highway three ninety five, South Intersection, Smith.
And Mr. Spencer, do you want to add there?
Yeah, uh, big exciting news, the realignment of the three ninety five and Southeast Second Street that we have been talking about for several years, we are finally ready to let a contract on this, I remember we had a discussion early last year where you approved a final design, you then went out with that, decided for a bid, and the bids that came in in the middle of twenty twenty-three were far, far higher than the engineer's estimate, and in some cases, almost three times the engineer's estimate, and so we decided at that point to reject all the bids, and then scale back the project a little bit to get into where we would actually match the cash on hand, we have prebidded minus the sequels, and minus the trees and landscaping, and just doing it as more of a safety improvement and gateway improvements with columns, I had a low bid for this was, uh, three hundred and fourteen thousand for policy contracting, and, uh, that bid option does include both of the columns, so we will be able to do both of them, when the original bids came in, and the columns themselves were close to a hundred thousand, we thought, well, let's do just one, and do a second as an alternate, obviously, was able to bid that low enough that we were able to do both. So, you have the four bids that came in, and obviously, it's lowest, they've been reviewed, and it's recommended that we award the contract to them to construct.
So, Quint, uh, it came in under what a projected bid was, so is it possible that we can do those others as an alternate, or is it?
I don't think that we would have the cash on hand to do much more than that, by the time we pay for the construction oversight and everything, we're gonna be ready to add what we have, but you did.
Okay, and I think, Mr. Smith, that you indicated some of that could be done internally, landscaping.
Yeah, potentially, it is gonna be ready to have the landscape, so in the future, we could do that, or, as a future project as well.
And policy is the, already, and they did their product first recently?
They, they buried the, the drain line over, uh, the.
It was part of the. Any other? Any other questions for the council? Any public comments on uh resolution number twelve? I get a motion for a word contact to Odyssey. Motion to approve resolution twenty, word construction contract, asking construction.
So moved all that. Second.
But we're like, Council Premier said, like, Council Premier, that we need to approve resolution number twenty. Wrong, yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, here a resolution number twenty one, bond authorization for North Parkinson Urban Renewal Area. Infrastructure project, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, so we talked a lot about this already, but this is just the urban renewal districts portion of that, um. Another authorizing res- resolution that they will, and, and also directing staff to develop an agreement. To pay the city back for the bonding, those types of things, so all that's in this resolution.
Any questions for the council? So your comment in here was a five million dollar loan that we're gonna take out to pay for this. Could purely be paid off by the property tax three percent increase, even if we build nothing.
Even if we build nothing, and we already have something built in the area, so we'll have additional above that already. And, you know, I didn't really get to talk as much about this before, but the reason we're trying to move this project kind of forward is the property owners. Want to have some certainty, where's the road gonna go, how's it gonna affect the parcels, those types of things, so that they, they have people interested in developing. If they just, they wanna have some more certainty about what it's gonna look like.
So our big issue too is turning the stoplight, right, who is gonna pay for it?
Right, right, they.
If you want to come in there and build something and you have to pay the stoplight, how is possible to do that?
Right, so now we can help them with that.
We are getting a stoplight?
There, there is a stoplight there, yes.
Any other questions on resolution number twelve? Yes, I have one.
This is a different bond from the one we just.
Well, this would be a portion of that bond, so five million of the twenty would go to this project. It's, that will be paid for by this project itself.
Public comment on resolution. I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty one without modification. So, second, second by Council Premier, that we need to adopt resolution twenty one without modification. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Motion passes, five one, Councilwoman in opposition. All right, uh Mr. Smith, anything else? Then we are adjourned.